Alright, thank you everybody. Let's bring this meeting to the Board of Education to order at 7:08. You all practice the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, one nation, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Alright, thank you. Dr. Willett, favorite part, acknowledge.
So as, in fact, can you hear us? Alright, excellent. So we, um, this is a lot of our favorite, probably all of our favorite part of the meeting, so I get to do an acknowledgement. And today, we have very, very special group of students and their families with us. It's the students who are involved in the Invention Convention, which is a very big deal. And you've been, uh, you've met some of them before. It's a competition, basically, to come up with the most inventive thing that, you know, invention that they can. And they've been highlighted. Many of them have received awards and also are going on to the national recognition. So I wanted to bring in Ms. Lehman to introduce our awesome students and to say a few words. And she is above the screen, probably this screen, while I try to figure with this.
Thank you, Walt. Good evening. Thank you for taking time from your agenda tonight to honor our TMS students for their success during the Connecticut Invention Convention. Grade six had several students either earn awards from CIC, move up to Nationals, or both. These three of the innovators are moving to Nationals, maybe one this summer and two coming next year. The students who sit before us tonight have demonstrated an excellent application of the engineering and design curriculum implemented in sixth grade. The Invention Convention is a free program. It's flexible and hands-on curriculum and provides opportunities for students to think critically by identifying problems in their world. Next, they apply STEM, invention, and entrepreneurial skills to build real-world innovative solutions. Without being overly wordy, these young inventors spent a great deal of time contemplating the problems of the world and how best to solve them. They had to persevere through feedback and challenges as they designed and built their prototypes through multiple iterations. They presented in front of judges at TMS and then redesigned and presented at CIC state finals on June 8th at the University of Connecticut. What a remarkable group of students these scholars are. Please allow me to introduce them. Arnia Dongre, Society of Women Engineers Award and Nationals. Arnia created the prototype called the SSS, Splatter Shield and Stir. Did she stand well? I couldn't see.
That didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
Sorry. Evan Overton, Lincoln Financial Foundation Award. Evan created the solar mug. Olivia Santangelo, Invention Convention US Nationals. Olivia created the amazing anti-anxiety dog bed. And last but not least, Chaney Wu earned the US Innovator Challenge, Next Step Innovators, Inventors, sorry, a virtual national competition. Chaney created the spectacular shoe dryer.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. We really appreciate it. Um, so.
Okay, if I finish? Okay, sorry. I have some more. Thank you. As an educator, I can assure you that the sixth grade science teachers proudly promote a program that encourages developing the portrait of a graduate's skills and dispositions through the use of the Connecticut Invention Convention program. Many skills might be obvious, such as creative and critical thinking and problem solving, while other skills might seem less apparent, such as effective communication. All parts of our invention program require students to be resilient and to have a growth mindset. Throughout the years, we continue to encourage our sixth grade students to engage in the Invention Convention process. Students are challenged to explore real-world problems and develop real-world solutions. As evidenced by these fine young inventors, when you raise the bar, students rise to it and even make it over the bar, embracing the call for a good challenge. This is a proud night for these innovators. Thank you for bringing them here to honor their achievements.
So do you mind if I ask some questions? Yeah, you have the splatter shield. What's the splatter shield? How does that help? We'd love to hear more about this.
No, no, not people. If they're teaching an invention, I'm about to see when you're cooking. From those platters falls the land.
Definitely purchasing that once you have. It's gonna be great. Who do you have with you tonight?
My mom, my brother.
Welcome. You have the, you have the solar mug, huh? Tell us about that.
She is, um, it's pretty much a love, self-eating mug that uses solar energy. In case you ever get lost in the woods or camping and you just wanna make yourself play.
Cool. Well, that's, we're definitely gonna have a lot of solar energy in the future. What do you have with you today?
I have my family, my grandpa, and my brother, my sister, my mom.
Nice, welcome. Olivia, the amazing anti-anxiety dog bed. Oh my gosh, I could have used that.
It's, I think that has a bunch of things such as a lavender scent repellent, a heating point, a voice machine, a mattress type thing.
Nice. Are you gonna create a human version of that? Who do you have with you today? Well, thank you for the comment. Nice to see you. Dana, you have, uh, you have the spectacular shoe driver, the shoe dryer. I love the name too.
Basically like, I don't know, I like, push it, but take too long to dry. So like, the tacky shoe dryer, it's like, it's dry and warm your shoes, and then the dog's trying back. Like, it's like a towel on top of the inside. And, um, it has a handle to help it dry and keep, and it also has like a cock.
So I'm saying very.
That's great.
Who do you have, uh, who can see that?
Oh, I have my mom, my brother, and my dad.
You know? But we are so proud of you. And, um, next time, maybe you can invent something that will keep first your chocolate bars from melting. Because I did get you them, but they melted. So I need to get you new ones. But I'll be sending you a little card and a little chocolate bar saying thank you and thanking, honoring you. Thank you so much for allowing us to honor you tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the, you know, to the whole world here? Any suggestions you have for how we might, you know, make Invention Convention even better?
It was a very well-organized event. It was amazing. We're having over 300 inventors there and staff and judges and parents. They did an amazing job.
It was camp, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, any, any other questions from the board?
Absolutely. Comment. You know, I'm absolutely in awe of each of you. The, the, to see these problems and see them as solution is amazing. I have no idea how you, you came up with each of these ideas, but I'm so thrilled that you did. Uh, to parents and the families, thank you for the support that it requires to, to raise young adults like this. And this is what we come here to do, is to see this and to meet young adults like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't forget to follow up with the patents, right? Anything else?
Anybody?
No, just like to kind of echo what Tony said and thank you all for coming. It's, it's so like invigorating to hear the new ideas and stuff. I'm a runner, so my shoes get wet and I'm like, how do I try them? They're not gonna be ready for tomorrow. So that is an amazing idea. And the, the, all of the ideas are just so great. And I'm just so proud of all of you for putting in the effort and the extra time and the families for supporting. And, and thank you all so much for coming. And we're so proud of the families and the students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Now, say add ditto. Yeah, what they're gonna do, what they're gonna do. This is, I tell, we all talk about it all the time. This is our favorite part of every meeting, specifically my favorite part of every meeting. We get to acknowledge everything that you guys do in, in the school, in sometimes out of the school, at Gampel, did I just hear? Natural. So, um, well done to you. When you get up to the high school, we'll see Mrs. Bridge. She'll get you into the, you know, shark tank activities. You know, all these things. So, uh, really awesome. Really awesome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
And, and Ms. Lehman, for, for you as well. Yes. I don't think we, we haven't recognized the absolute magic that you and your team put in to, to help and to, to really empower these young adults to be who they are and who they're becoming. So the collective team has my appreciation and my admiration. And Tony, can I just add, Mrs. So, just so you all know, Mrs. Lehman was my sixth grade teacher as well. Okay, so this is a really cool moment. I know she's flat. Is there a really cool moment when this gets to happen? So you've got, you've got a great teacher on your hands. And I'm so glad you guys got to take part in this with Mrs. Lehman. Mrs. Lehman, thank you. You're amazing.
You're doing an amazing job. So thank you again. Now, our, our, um, what we wanted to do is honor you tonight and not torture you. So you do not have to say. Thank you very much for coming. We'll send you something. And it's wonderful that you're here.
Exactly, not your back. Thank you. But anyways, so. I mean, this is the usual.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
You did do wonders. It's amazing. Something suggested this for five years.
This, this.
Yeah, to start the meeting was.
You wanna see?
The boys make, and it's great.
Yes.
Not possibly, regional box, where's regional box? Get them in here with their normal. Well, that would be fun.
No, no, you're, you're absolutely right. Like, we talked about that. This is, this is the, yeah, this is the fun part and the, you know, the uplifting. So this is, we need to do more.
Well, it allows you to kind of really see more. If you can't go on the grounds and say, like, you can see what's going on in this school, right? So I like that. It's, it's great.
Alright, let me double check. Everybody can hear us out there. Let's see agenda. Thank you. Alright, do we have any additions to the agenda?
Tony, Tony, I just had a suggestion that maybe remove public participation to before the executive session. But it was just a thought. No, but I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense. Remove P and Q to before O.
Yeah.
And that way Lisa as well.
So that would action and second.
Alright, then I will, uh, thank you Dana, that's a good one. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the June 12th meeting minutes. So do we have a second?
Um, I, I would second. I thought there was one thing in the minutes where I was saying something and then, but I think ultimately Dr. Willett said the second thing. And now I don't have it. It's not. Anyway, second. What was said, Dr. Willett said the second, like, he was clarifying what was said and.
Any discussion? Dana?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dana?
Wait.
Dana?
Did you say Dana? I'm sorry. I had a mute problem. Hi.
Yes?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Aye as well, Dr. Willett. Minutes, pets. Alright, public participation. Members of the Talon Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their ideas at this time. Would appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to succeed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting center. So we will alternate between the people in the room and those online. If online, now if you would raise your hand in the room, but they can raise. Rebecca Rizley.
Hi, can you, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. Rebecca Rizley, 103 Mountain Spring Road. Um, I, you know, not a whole lot to say. I know summer, we are all heading into summer. It's getting into full swing here. So, um, kudos to all of you for being here tonight. Um, and, you know, just wanted to thank you all for the hard work that you put in during this budget season. Um, it was contentious at times and painful at times, but, um, you all have been doing the hard work and showing your dedication to our students, to our staff. Um, and I just want you to know that it's seen and it's appreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? In the room, uh-huh. Going twice? Alright, hearing done, closed public participation. Points of information. Would anybody from the board like to speak? Dana, go ahead.
Um, first of all, phenomenal job to those Invention Convention folks that were there tonight and all the other participants. Um, I did see the post on Facebook and it was pretty fantastic. Some of, some of the creations from our, our sixth graders. Um, secondly, I got, I was lucky enough to be able to participate, um, with some of our teammates at the last, the eighth grade promotion and the high school graduation. Um, actually, it was graduation after graduation after graduation. I got to go to the TIS because I had a TIS or going into sixth grade. Um, and I would like to say, you know, to Mr. Janine and Ms. Merritt and then, you know, uh, Ms. Hickey and then Tom, Mr. Poland. The, the ceremonies were phenomenal. Um, such, um, promising young students promoting through all of our grades. The only one I missed was Bridge Grove, but fantastic ceremonies for all, um, these students and families. So, uh, well done to Talon Public Schools and the future is bright with, um, some of our kiddos venturing on into the world. Uh, the speeches were fantastic. Um, you know, the eighth grade speeches as well as the high school speeches. I was blown away by the intelligence and, um, just the, how they presented themselves and, and spoke so eloquently. Um, it was just fantastic to be a part of. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Willett and the entire administrative staff for putting on such fantastic promotions and graduations.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, anybody else? Alright. Moving on, student representatives are not here. Committee and liaison reports. Dan is on the line. Policy, Dan?
Uh, we met today and went over some anonymous communication, um, information. Um, so, uh, Jayden and myself, along with Dr. Willett and Lisa, uh, was present. Um, Dan wasn't able to make it due to work obligation, but we were able to talk a lot about some anonymous communication. Um, so we're going to have, we're gonna be bringing something in the next policy meeting to hopefully have something to bring to the board over the next handful of meetings. Um, and then we kind of created a pipeline for some policies that we'd like to, to look at over the next handful of months.
Good question. The anonymous communication, are you, is that a policy we're working on or discussing communication we haven't seen?
Something that we're working on you haven't received. Sorry, Dr. Willett.
Something, what'd you say Dana, in fact?
No, I thought I heard Dr. Willett chiming in, but it's something that we started talking about. So we're looking at, um, talking about a, um, looking at the policy for next policy meeting to then bring something to the board.
Right. Thank you. Alright, communication.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, we, uh, we met early this month, um, about two weeks before scheduled or usual schedule, just to get, uh, some things out of the way before people went on vacation and such. But, uh, no, we're, um, we're taking July, the month of July, the meeting has been canceled. Um, what's going to be happening is we're waiting Dr. Willett to see the staff and who might be able to sign up and get some things coordinated for some of the extracurriculars or co-curriculars that will be happening in the fall, um, September and ending before Thanksgiving. So there's some things coming down the pipe. We're just trying to get staff and who's gonna volunteer and figure out what supplies we might need or teachers that might be, uh, running these programs. So.
Alright.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Curriculum, Bill?
We ended up canceling this month because of some, uh, scheduling, um, issues, but we will be back at it next month with our social studies, uh, presentation.
Alright. Thank you. And last negotiation. Jen?
None at this time.
Whether? If you remember, I'm sorry. Alright, thank you all. Alright, Chairperson, Chairperson's report. Again, nothing prepared, but just in, you know, we're, we're through the official, but, you know, there was a lot of very heavy, very serious conversations, you know, and, and many of them. And then right at the end of it, as Dana brought it, you know, we got the opportunity to do the graduations and the stuff. The blessing of being able to do the, the second grade step up, the, the middle school and then the high school. And, you know, in addition, it, it just reminded me of why we do, you know, what we do. And, and, you know, you add to it the, you know, the invention, young adults that we've seen here, the, the deck of students that we've seen, uh, some of the other ideas like rage robotics that Jayden, you, you know, you brought up. And, and I wanted to take the opportunity and take this meeting to remind us all of, to say, you know what, take a breath. Let's take a moment after the heaviness of the budget season. Let's look at the amazing young adults that are coming through our school system that are taking advantage of the staff and then the resources that are available and becoming absolutely amazing, the amazing people and citizens. The thing through all of those graduations and ceremonies that really caught me was the bearing of each of these students. You know, the, the middle school particularly, as we were standing there, shaking hands and saying congratulations and, and saying see to these students. And I'm looking them in the eye and I'm seeing confidence and I'm seeing strength. I'm seeing such power in these little bitty bodies that I'm excited about the future. So again, I want to congratulate, I wanted to take a moment right to just bask in that energy, knowing that soon we'll get back to the hard work, we'll get back to things. But there, there's beauty to it. Thank you. Dr. Willett, uh, we don't have any items of a superintendent's report, but did you have any comments you'd like to make there?
No, just, uh, just, we had the admin retreat last week. Um, retreat is, was just the, with, saying day-long meetings, which they make fun of, but, um, we're very productive. We, we came up with a lot of things I'll be reporting out to the board on next meeting or so. Um, and so, uh, you know, we're getting prepared now. We have a new evaluation plan coming up. That's gonna be coming to the board. State required that we changed it and put out a model for it. We'll give you the full narrative on that. Um, it's not just for part, we changed, changed it across the state, you know, made it, made it, they required, um, change for everybody. So that's something I'll describe in greater detail later, but, you know, a lot of really good work got done. Um, a lot of work on, I'm seeing where we might be in three to five years and thinking about things like that. So I'll report that in the next couple of meetings.
Looking forward to it. New business, Dr. Willett, field and ground agreement.
Right, so what we have, um, it's every, well, it used to be every, uh, year. Now we've alternated a bit and started to do it every three years. The buildings and grounds agreement is an agreement between the board and the town with respect to, uh, basically, as it states, building grounds. And most specifically, there are areas that the board is, or schools are responsible for and areas that the town is responsible for. And so sometimes people get, um, you know, confused about kind of who is doing what. So that's why this agreement is in place. Uh, in the past, the board hasn't always been interested in seeing it. But, um, but in recent years, you know, as questions have come up about, oh, you know, is that area of grass like this? Or, um, you know, who is responsible for this athletic field? Or who will finance the, you know, capital project on such field? Who collects money from UConn's cross-team coming and practicing on such field and so on? Uh, and so there's been a, you know, a desire to know a little bit more about it. So this information is, trying to, maybe I'll move the screen here to see. Um, this information for the board has the previous, uh, building, field and grounds agreement as well as the new one. And this wording is mostly the same. The thing to look at that might be useful to people in answering some questions are where the boundaries are. Uh, so you can see that the red is basically what our school district takes care of. And it's for each of the buildings, you can see the boundaries. And then the, um, the yellow is more broadly where the town would be doing it. So, um, an example of a question that recently came up was at TMS, who takes care of, say, the athletic fields and the softball fields and the baseball fields? This would be the town. So sometimes questions come up, you know, A, we'd like to know, uh, if something can be done with this field or, you know, if there's something in disarray. Um, that yellow area is the town's domain and the red area is the school. So you can see like right outside the auditorium cafeteria, this grass, this is where the custodians would cut in the back and so on. These athletic fields and these areas are where the town would be taking care of. So that's, that's really the question that comes up most often is who's responsible for taking care of what? And then the wording of the agreement has some of the specifics like weed wax, such area. There's also little areas, um, that are taken from, um, donors, kind of people who volunteer to take over a space and they call it adopt a spot. Uh, and so the adopt a spot thing can be a little tricky because it's really well-meaning people and they, they're wonderful, but, um, they fluctuate. So what could happen is somebody could adopt a spot and then, you know, and I think of any year, there might be some trouble and they no longer want the spot. And so you'll have, you know, kind of overrun areas. And, um, and we try to come in and, you know, take care of that when it happens. Um, so one of those areas is the entry. You can't really see it here. So one of those areas is the entry, you can't really see it here, but the entry to the school, there's some areas on the front here that are adopt a spots. And one of them, for instance, was kind of overrun and overgrown and that's because the group that did that and all others could do what they wanted to do it, and we had to figure out, you know, we got people in and so on to do it. But sometimes if we're not planning on expenditure there, you know, we have to figure that out, so we will, we'll order the mulch and apply it, and we have so much for that. Also heavy equipment, this is also who takes care of snow removal, you know, so the heavy equipment that the board used to have was given to the town years ago. So when, when there is a snowstorm, the town is usually taking care of parking lots, things like that. The board takes care of the sidewalks into the building and the town takes care of everything outside of it pretty much. And so, you know, when you have a very hard storm, very bad storm, sometimes things will, will be very difficult for facilities staff in the town. Maybe, you know, they're overwhelmed and there's state roads here and there's different roads. And so they're doing the best they can with the equipment they have, but they may not be able to prioritize the school lots if they have to get the main thoroughfares clear for emergency vehicles like that. So sometimes, you know, we may have to, this happens once in a while, we may have to delay or cancel for another town might not, because, you know, we have very hilly, hilly sort of topography here, there's highs and lows and small roads and, you know, curves, all kinds of curves. And so a town that maybe doesn't have all that, maybe South Windsor, you know, may be able to go on a day when Colin can't go. And it just has to do with sort of the topography, the number of vehicles and support they have. So it's, it's that kind of thing too, that you'll see, you know, the dynamics of, of why we have to do things, the way we have to do them are largely based in what we have for resources, what the town has for resources and so on. So this is provided to the board just so the board can actually have a chance to look at, you know, what the agreement has in it. The board did look at this back in 2021 when this question first came up. Hadn't always wanted to see it before that. It's typically signed by the town manager and me. And it is meant to just make sure everybody's clear on who's taking care of what.
Right, questions, comments?
I feel like there was some discussion about there's maybe gray areas that sometimes board bed staff has to take care of that really get taken care of even with this, and so how do we kind of navigate that with, you know, propelling feathers a bit? I don't know if we really, I just want to make it clear that there was, you know, there'd been some conversation around some of that. Does that mean it would be better to, you know, change the agreement and include the things that we're actually doing versus what the, you know, agreement says we're doing? But then, I, I don't know, I just want to be transparent a little bit about there's, there's a little bit of, you know, not a hundred percent like everything's going according to this document.
True. True, yeah. And, you know, it's trying to find the, the right words for all of this. I think that there is a genuine interest in everyone doing what they can to, to just stick to the plan. You know, we have an exceptional, exceptional staff in the town side, exceptional staff on the board side. One of the best facilities people have ever seen is Pete Staba. And so he, you know, he manages to get things done, rolls up his sleeves, jumps in. And so, you know, there are areas that, due to resource constraints or personnel constraints, sometimes town may have difficulty getting to. And, you know, I think Pete is, doesn't have a lot of people, he's got two other people. He'll try to, to make do and, and take and do things that need to be done to cover it. And that can be stressful, you know, and it does, it does add some layers of frustration stress for everyone. But again, you know, I, I think that people are trying their best they can and, you know, we just have to keep open channels of communication on that. I know that the, the board wanted to kind of get a sense of what the agreement had in it and kind of look at it regularly, bring it back up to you just so you're aware of that. So that's, that's really, I think the benefit of you having it tonight is being able to see that, see what the boundaries are. Questions come up, you'll have a good idea as to, well, who's gonna, who's best to answer that? Maybe it's the town, maybe it's the board, it's this field over here, might be the town. And then we can move forward from there, you know, we'll keep working and I'll talk to the town manager, he's very receptive to working with us, with everyone in town as you probably know. And so, you know, I hope to be able to make sure we're addressing the concerns that everybody has. Keeping that cooperation at its highest levels on both our board and.
Yeah, Brian, Brian.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I would follow up with what Rainey had mentioned, was that that last committee meeting for the facilities and finance a couple of weeks ago regarding Steve, the maintenance gentleman, had mentioned how he was more or less revamping a large portion, portion of one of the dugouts and, you know, using his own materials and time to do that. I don't know if there's any, you know, way that we want to put if, you know, put something into the town that if we're going to, and I say we, more or less the school staff, if we're going to go the extra mile, you know, putting an hour here, half hour there is not a big deal, but this sounded like a pretty large project that he got himself into when we already have limited resources, but in budgetary constraints, that I think there should be some sort of discussion on, hey, let's stop this project and call somebody and see if we're going to be reimbursed for materials, or do they have a guy who can come down and give them a hand sort of thing? So I understand working with the town to try to make things, you know, as smooth as possible because we're both kind of short with budgetary issues, but you shouldn't be the only people taking the burden just because it is on school grounds, even, you know, considering that it is the town's responsibility per the contract. So I'll leave it at that.
Did you have any comment on that?
No, I, I, I would just say that, you know, again, it helps for everybody to know who's is what because any questions come up about, hey, you know, what about the softball fields and Little League has questions on. I'm setting up a meeting between myself, town staff, and our staff to talk to, say, the Little League about fields so that we can bring everyone together and work on it effectively in partnership. You know, I guess the bottom line is, I think there are things that pop up and Pete, you know, Mr. Staba jumps right in, takes care of things, even fix the, the benches down at the tennis, tennis courts, you know. There are things that rolls up his sleeves and jumps in and does, and I think we all do in our, in our ways. And it's come to that, I think, because, you know, the town's doing the best it can and it doesn't necessarily have all the resources it needs, and so, you know, we're trying, everyone's trying to help bridge that. I think that's, that's really what it comes down to. So, you know, we have the agreement so that we on paper can say, look, this is this, this is ours, this is yours, here's the cooking stove, here's the trash gets picked up, you pick up that trash, we pick up this trash. And at least we can call each other and say, hey, you know, that trash isn't picked up so that there's no ambiguity about who's supposed to be doing it. But I think it, it does go back to sometimes there's shortages, sometimes they just don't maybe have what they need, and so we're doing, I think everybody's doing the best they can. But I think sometimes board members get approached, you know, why is that spot overgrown, might be an adopted spot, you know, where is this, you know, why can't that softball field or baseball field, why, why, why is the mound three feet down? Oh, we'll call the town, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out, that you may want to call the town and ask them about that. So that's, that's more or less why we're doing this, is to help the board know whose space is whom's, you know, direct people accordingly. As far as sometimes some of the frustrations, I just think it's, everybody's under, wants trying to do the best they can with the resources. So I think that's what it really comes down to.
Brian, did that answer your question?
Yes, that, that, that's fine. Yeah, I just, you know, I, I'd just say, you know, if, if we only have three maintenance and they have, you know, a dozen, twelve, fifteen people, you know, that's, that's all my, my point is for these larger projects that we're going to be taking them on ourselves. You know, maybe a reach out for an extra hand possible. Make them even aware, they might not even be aware that there was a problem, you know, with X, Y, or Z, so. Thanks.
Example would be, and I have, I reach up to town staff, we need to resolve, say, an issue that was brought up by Little League recently. You know, I've, I've got a meeting set up for us to do that. And so we do try to get everybody together and work it out.
But just from my own perspective, and I appreciate, Dr. Will, you bringing this to attention, I'm while I understand the intent, bringing it to that people knew who was responsible for doing what. Having been on the board during that recent field term update conversation, and then the whole lot consultation, that's what we're trying to work through that. But I'm more interested in the, the surveillance, you know, as, as this agreement is put together, you know, for example, there's, there's an annual meeting, I guess, between you or your representative and the town manager, their representative to, to go over, was it June, on our, on June first, to go over issues, challenges, planning ahead. Has that happened or does that usually happen later?
That's, well, because of the referendum and everything, that just kind of got everybody's attention. He and I are meeting, I think, at here too. We'll be going over this, one of, one of the things.
So is the intention for that meeting just to modify or augment the agreement?
Can be if one or the other has issues, something they want to discuss, and usually I will have sat down with our people. And the town manager will have sat down with theirs and we bring to it anything that they need to be modified. This new proposal is the result of that. That's, that's already been done on, on my side of the fence. There was current thing sent over from Mike Olvison, I sent the communication, I went and discussed it. Mr. Staba threw it, he had a couple of things to tweet, we also tweet snaps. And I take that back to the town and that's what we talked to the town about. They may or may not have tweeted that down, but they aren't going to have much. And that meeting, we were excited at that point, we're, we're, okay.
So does that meeting, because again, I'm just scanning through here, but it looks like the town provides essentially an invoice to, to Mr. Staba in around November for him to include in his budget request of the year. If your meeting then happens later, does that affect that next budget update?
Well, no, because anything that's big enough like capital, we're developing that for a fifth season. That would be way before. That, then that stuff may evolve. It, it can come up at almost any time too. But for instance, those fields though, have been tested. I forget what the term is, but essentially in a, in a non-technical sense, it's how much spring that has. Forget the seed, you know, what spore it is. We would have tested that ahead of time and then if it had issues, we'd bring it up to discuss and add to capital requests. So we would be, we'll be way, getting it in capital, capital's first flyover for us for this is August. Then into September, it's board, we'll get out of here, October, it's submitted to.
But anything that falls in that gray zone between capital and that can, that can, yeah, that's what, the, the, the town came and said, this is how much it's going to cost for us to do it to this agreement outside of capital. In June, you and Mr. Foley sit down and you discuss, and it comes up that Olvis just out of the air, you know, he can't maintain a certain area that we're going to have to figure out because he just doesn't, yeah. But then that, there's a cost to that, and if that cost is not minimal, you have to offset already?
Well, there could be something we have to discuss. But we can't come up with money, we don't have, it's going to become over. Something would, if it's not going to be a health, safety issue, something might not happen. So that's also why there, there's an area, the adopt a spot is now looking a little rough. Neither side had funds to do anything about it, might be an example. So it might look a little ugly for a while. It's not beyond some of us to come in with weed whackers thing and take care of stuff ourselves, you know. I know Peter's certain, but, you know, everybody's kind of pitched in from time to time. I think it's, it's not typical that something massive would be in that kind of situation. We don't have any ability to take on any debt. So if it's something big, it is not going to be the board to begin. You know, if it's an expense that is big enough that you're going to need to get financing for, that could not be a thing. If it's something like all the equipment for snow stuff, we agreed to that a long time ago. There's not a whole lot more that really could shift here because everybody's got its space, you know, their space. If the town said you're going to be responsible for the athletics field now, we would have to say we can't. You know, at this point, we're not going to have, we can't pull funds out of nowhere to do that. I could come back to the board and say, this, this situation has shifted and there is a question from the town that the board take over X, Y, or Z. And we'd have to have a conversation about where that money's going to come from. So it could go from the RF, this capital come from the RF. But we have to have a conversation probably about that, it was a very large expense. Usually it's not. It's just, just not, just not being able to, like, here's the lunch tables and weed whacking hasn't been done at the lunch tables. Those are not, you know, I'm just using an example, those are outside of our realm, you know, but they look terrible and people will approach. Just using this as fictitious example, people are really mad about the lunch table, you know, but it's not our space and eventually someone else just to do the lunch table. Or something like that, you know, weed whack that area. That wouldn't be a massive expense, it's just time. And that's the thing, the thing that's rubbing, that's creating most tension right now is time, everybody, no one has enough time.
That's what I think, we may, not necessarily, but that's what I'm hearing. So if, if it winter, after you have that meeting and discussion, take it back to F C, just if there's a high fight, I'd like the board to at least be aware of what the conversation's about.
Yeah, definitely.
And anything else on this one? Jayden?
No, thank you.
Your resting face is curious. All right, moving on then, Dr. Will, homeless children and youth politics.
Do we have to accept this or anything, or is that important?
Not unless you do, you practice doing that. All right, so homeless students, this was reviewed by the policy committee and and so it is an update to an existing policy. There were quite a few changes to McKinney Vento. Most of the changes were things that require us to, you know, to provide. They were being more specific about the responsibilities of the district and individuals' rights. And so it's basically an overlay of the new shipment policy, which it's basically an overlay of the new shipment policy, which is regulation is really where more, uh, specificity is. The policy itself is fairly short and just references law. Um, the regulation is a basically a copy paste straight from shipment, just doing the updates of the language, um, to make sure we're in compliance with everything that needs to happen for any family that would be in a condition of homelessness. It is a very robust, um, set of legislation, so laws, there are a lot of responsibilities for the district. Homeless, homelessness is defined in a number of ways. Um, sharing housing, living in emergency shelters, that can mean everything from a family who had a fire in denture shelter to a, um, person who's fleeing and abusive. Or may, um, and all of those conditions exist for us as they do everywhere else, um, and can be any condition of living in a car, in a park, any, any situation where the kids are not, say, in a um, viable home, that can be a church, and it doesn't have to be in Talon. So if there's an issue, and the family originated in Talon and now they live in, um, you know, church or monastery somewhere in some other town, we're responsible for them and we're responsible for transportation. Um, and they are not, um, they are not subject to residency rules. Uh, unless they get a, um, permanent residence and that permanent residence must be maintained for at least a year and sometimes two years before you can take any kind of um, movement on that, do any kind of movement. So it's extremely robust legislation and the language has just been expanded, so this was a taking off shipments, information, making sure that we, um, covered everything that they recommend it to be covered in the um, it's long and there's, um, you know, enough here for a meaty read if you're gonna do that, so. I do a second read of it, but there's not much leeway with respect to what we can do. So for instance, we could not say, um, we're not going to transport, because we absolutely have to change. It's, it's a requirement, so, um, you know, that's the short version of it, but you can read the long version, I just kind of scroll through, uh, our response anyways. And you can kind of see how sensitive. I am the McKinney Vento coordinator for the district, so these kinds of cases will come up to our office and really hire them. And it typically is someone who can direct the resources of district. Cause you have to be able to say, okay, we're gonna provide, you know, transportation setup, we're gonna get, um, gonna help you find housing, we're going to work with human services to find financial assistance, we're going to look for Husky, um, Husky medical insurance, if it's a an estrangement situation, or if it's a, um, emancipation, you can have a situation where a family is, has an issue. Student, young adult has an issue, they suck, they part face. And, uh, that student is seeking an emancipation, might be a fifteen, sixteen, usually sixteen, seventeen year old uh, who has nowhere to live and, um, you know, we are responsible for helping them find some place to be and to transport. So that's, that's, you know, some of the small and real kind of examples of the things.
Dana, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, I, well, yes, I don't want to say no and then talk. Um, no, yeah, Dr. Will did a thorough job with this, explaining it to us in the policy committee. We had good, uh, robust conversations regarding it. I think it's phenomenal, um, what we do, um, to support all of our, all of our stu- students and to ensure they can get to class and get to school no matter what their situation. So actually diving into this policy is that it's pretty phenomenal, the things that, that we do as a, as board of education, or that our board of education actually does for our students to get them to school. So I just thank Dr. Willet for updating us and making sure that we were, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's and, and doing the right thing, um, by the families, um, the McKinney Vento families and, and, and such. So that we can make sure that we take care of every student in Talon, or, uh, in, even outside of Talon, because that's what it protects, so. But, uh, I appreciate him bringing this to the policy, you and I talked about it a lot prior to throwing it on uh, the conversation, and it felt it was really important to, to get us up to date and move forward with the board.
For all this is the first green, Dr. Willet? First time it's brought to you. Do we have any, any comments from the board? Saying none, thank you both. L three, copy your contract.
Okay. So. So, um, the copier contract that we currently have C D S, um, this company is a, uh, state, this company is on the state list. The vendor went through the bidding process with the state. And the reason I'm bringing it to the board level is we've had a couple of copier companies work in the past with the district. Um, and in the past, they have been, um, probably, it's been quite challenging. And, um, you know, shortages, people not coming out to fix things, um, ink and, and toner shortages, uh, causing great frustration, the union are made it a, uh, issue, and well, the union rightfully brought it up in meetings about teacher productivity in the past. Um, and so we've had a kind of turbulent history with some of the companies. Um, and then, uh, we entered in a relationship with C D S, and since we've entered the relationship with C D S, it has been extremely smooth, things have been going very well. Um, and they came highly recommended at the time, it's cats though, and people have, which is the Connecticut Association of School Business professionals, uh, and they came highly recommended, and so, um, so, we've had a great relationship, and the contract is coming up for renewal of the, you know, the agreement is coming up. There are two options, um, it's a fourteen thousand dollar monthly charge with paper cut. Paper cut is a technology that allows you to save paper because you send print jobs queued through your computer. Um, and they, they get queued up and can be canceled at the copier level. Whereas the old technology, you send a job, goes and it's out, queues and it goes, but this one, uh, stops it and gives you a code, and you go up and you can cancel jobs. So how it helps is sometimes when somebody sends that two hundred page report, it goes, oh my god, oh my god, now I gotta start this thing, and oops. And it goes and prints two hundred pages of two hundred fifty page report. And it could have been canceled sort of half the copier, had you been able to queue it up. Um, instead, if you send the wrong thing and you send the right thing after it, when you go to the copier, it doesn't print until you've entered your code, and then you can choose the job that was the right job instead of paper cut. So technically it saves paper, I mean, I don't think too many people make too many of those mistakes. So the price difference is not massive with paper cutting without, but, um, you know, without, it's gonna be okay too, if that's, that's where the district wants it. Uh, policy thirty twenty uh, provides the district in certain situations to be able to waive the bidding process. And these situations under section one and section five. Section one is only one reasonable qualified source can be identified and shall be in good situations such as versions cooperated material, textbooks, et cetera. Section five is the formal process would result in substantially higher costs to the district or inefficient use of personnel or cause substantial disruption of school operations, um, and a waiver can be considered by the superintendent, provided an administrator requests a waiver. Requesting a waiver, the requesting administrator must make a written request to the superintendent or his or her designee, waiver must get a signature of the administrator, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and so this is coming up because the chief, um, financial officer here, um, cause Espinoza has officially requested a waiver of me. Because of the history of the situation in company and there, there not being a lot of real good um, matters in, insofar as our past experience is concerned. Um, the other things to consider are, it is a state, um, food company and that, that they went through the state bidding process. So these are other reasons to, you know, it's not just some unknown company that's not on the state list, it hasn't been into any process, they've, they've been vetted. And so sometimes, um, when we purchase equipment for computers, for instance, we're allowed to purchase it if the state has approved the vendor and the state has gone through the process, we're allowed to use S H I, for instance, as a state vendor for technology, so we can use that state vendor because they, um, they're approved state, uh, approved state list. And they have had the state, uh, bid process. This company is in that situation too, but given people's questions, sometimes I wanted to make sure that, you know, that this was in front of the board before I took any action, I wanted the board to know that a waiver has been requested of me.
Questions, comments? Any?
Um, yeah, so I, one of my jobs, we work with C D S, we've worked a long time, they, they are a good company, they're certainly, um, I'll say they're often wanting to sign you a new product if they think they can, so you gotta kind of push back on that. When I'm doing the math on that, um, that's seventy eight hundred dollars for paper cut versus not paper cut. Or, well, maybe that's, I'm doing monthly, right? So, yeah, seventy eight hundred dollars, so, you know, if you don't really think that I, I would prefer that we go without the paper cut thing, that's a lot of money, um. But I, I agree that they're, you know, they're reliable, they're gonna send the tax out, they're, they're gonna send you the toner, we, we've never had a problem at all. Um, we've only had to push back sometimes and they're like, oh, we can't fix it, and we're like, yes, you can, and they're like, oh, yeah, we can. So, so that's just, uh, I, I mean, you've already, I'm sure, or maybe come up against, so I'm fine with it.
I mean, I actually, I agree with you.
Yeah, no.
That is what they'll come up with, is hey, now we have paper cut.
Yeah, we need to really, you know, everybody's got to be responsible about what they're doing and nature.
Okay, just really quickly, um, I agree in the same, we'll say, but more so it, does it work in the same way that, you know, eh, where I work? You, you, if you send a black and white copy through, it costs like ten cents, fifteen cents, and you get sort of billed for um, however many copies you had that month and whatever, or is it just this fixed price? That's my number one question.
It's, the, the contract has the price of the equipment that we have.
Gotcha.
Then the toner and all of that, so it is, it's a cost. These are the contract for all the equipment and all around that, and that's still possible.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's in all the tiny little language that's included there, that's
But isn't there like, you get this many black copies, black, white, this many color, or do you not?
It's supposed to cover X amount. Yeah, for toner, every toner is supposed to go back to a certain number and all that, and maybe. But, um, I will say, I think that, just to echo what you said, but particularly for us, I mean, it has been so much better I don't think we need paper cut either, frankly, that, that didn't impress me when I saw it, not that some people wouldn't be wanting it or like, and um, but I can tell you, it is a massive difference from all the pattern past, which is why the chief of, um, financial officer there just really wants to see if we can get this company to keep going.
Sure, the reason, the reason of my oftentimes, what you'll see happen is people are sending stuff through the printer. But it's in color, which costs thirty cents per sheet instead of the ten cents, fifteen cents of black and white, and they realize halfway through their print, uh-oh, I just made a mistake. And so that little bit of thirty cents, thirty cents, thirty cents, thirty cents adds up over time as well. I don't know what it would be, cause it's hard to measure. Uh, but I just wanted to throw that out there as well, just because, you know, that little bit adds up. Is it more than the seventy eight hundred? I, yeah, probably not, I couldn't tell you, so, um, but I would agree with your basis then.
Well, I think the question is, can you shut off the color copying? Like, we tell people color, you have to do something extra to get the color, maybe someone else has to approve it, so, you know.
You can do that here, we don't have that option. Graphics, things like that, so we don't even give people those.
Gotcha, gotcha, nice. Gotcha, okay. You good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Ken.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, just some minor feedback that, um, the toner shortage, or at least one of them, I don't know if there were more than one, that actually occurred during, um, my P T O days several years ago. And I was really surprised at how long it lasted, um, and how it really disrupted daily business and caused a lot of frustration, um, for all staff. So, anything, obviously, if we're, if we have a company that we're not seeing things like that happen with, I would definitely want to avoid those issues in the future, but I just wanted to add that I did see that for myself. And it, it was a much bigger deal than it, than it sounds like it is.
Hey, Brian.
Yes, hello, yes, um, yeah, I was just curious in regards, I see the contract terms here, all parts, labor, drums and supplies excluding paper and staples. Do they have an option to buy the paper and staples? Have we priced that out, or how does that, um, as, you know, I'm just not too familiar with the process regarding those supplies, whether these people can supply that or not, uh, as a bundled price?
They can, I think in the past, we've just, it's been more cost effective for us because we can order it in the school system in bulk and generally, you. But that's, that's why we do it the way we do.
Uh, well, we haven't, all right, but we don't really know the, what the price of one versus the other, more or less.
Yeah, I mean, in the, I think we have in the past, and that's why we don't, we don't have this part of their contract, we, we get it ourselves. Because in the past, it's we can just price it out again, but that's generally will spend the case.
Other questions? Second one, you mentioned this, um, the angst with, with some of the other companies, how long ago?
Years, probably, it's this cycle prior to this contract. At least three.
Three, yeah. So this is the first.
This is the first iteration of keeping.
Is there a big increase in the price they're charging us now versus what we had?
Not a massive increase, unless you want to go with their extra features, or if you want to add, it's, we, we can also adjust it based on lead, so if it looks like it's gonna be something that, um, we have trouble with, we can reduce the number of printers, reduce the number of copiers, and do that. This is based on what we have, it's not crazy.
Any other thoughts? Hey, well, this is the last one in new business in four. Undertaking a motion to either recommend approving the waiver or going to bid?
I'll take a motion to approve the waiver on the copy.
Comments? Jayden? Aye. Brene?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Bill? Bill? Okay, Brian?
Just, I don't know if it's, I apologize, I probably just spoke earlier, is this for the thirteen, three fifty a month, uh, that we're voting on?
Right, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go with the.
That's what I, I should have said that.
Okay, y- yeah, aye.
Yeah, we should have been the
Tony, I was an aye as well, I'm sorry.
Going with thirteen, three fifteen without the paper cut.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, second that, Jay, Jen, did you? You know, I'm still waiting for the room to raise. Are you okay with the amendment? Yes.
Yes. I should have.
Dr. Willet, thank you for bringing that to the board's ten.
I think, just to answer, I think it's about a zero, it stays about the same, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the same number of copiers.
Yeah, it's not, there's no major increase. Still, this becomes massively short supply, it's gonna have to change. Still, this becomes a massive short supply and it's gonna have to change.
If they have a contract, they're supposed to stay.
Right.
And I have had parties, I win all the time.
Have it on paper. Okay, and so that within the policy, I can grant a waiver and the board is saying that's very small.
But Kevin is being. All right, so we have no business, we have no board action. As since earlier, we are going to move public participation before the executive session. Again, uh, topics, comments must be limited to items on this agenda. If you would like to speak online, please raise your your Zoom hand in the room. Raise your hand as well, we were alternating between the two, should come in the room. So if you'd like to speak uh, online, please raise your hand. Going once. And twice. We're looking in intimidated with the the clock, it's with some interest. Would anybody in the board like to speak? All right, hearing none, we will move on to executive session. Purpose of superintendent's evaluation, I'll undertake a motion to enter into executive session.
I'd like to move, we move into executive session. Excluding Dr. Willet in the initial speed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments? All right, Jane. Brady?
Aye.
Dana.
Can I ask a question? Did we say go into executive session, including or excluding?
Uh, initially excluding is the motion.
You just don't have to invite me. That's okay.
Did you copy that in?
No.
Jen.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
I'm in, aye, all right. At eight twenty one, we will enter an executive session.